To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up is our student representative Addison Zimmerman who will read our mega-statement.
All students will graduate with the knowledge, skills, attitudes, and behaviors necessary to achieve their personal goals and make a positive impact in the world.
Alright, and the next agenda item is also involving Addison with the student representative report.
Yes, um, good evening, members of the board. I'm pleased to present an oral summary of activities across the school district for the month of January. A more detailed written report will be available for the CFAUDS stakeholders in the public minutes and in the board's monthly newsletter for considerations. At the high school, third quarter has officially kicked off. The high school has a new electronic board in the cafeteria, which is exciting, which will display upcoming events. And orchestra took a trip to Nashville and enjoyed lots of unique opportunities. At the middle school this past weekend, they held donkey, but, um, basketball, excuse me. Last night, they held a showing of Screenagers at MyCon, and their winter sports have officially kicked off. At Homestead, they held their dump-off. Um, they had a visit from the high school choir choir, and their kindness crew has been leaving kind notes for students and staff around their buildings. At Hillcrest, the PTO has been working to raise more money for their playground, and they have just finished up mid-year assessments and data meetings. At Parkview, they are participating in One School One Read, and they hosted a family swim night at the middle school. And finally, at Southview, students have been participating in bus reteaches to review expectations. In conclusion, our district is off to a great start to the second half of the year. Thank you for your time and attention. I would be happy to answer any further questions at this time.
Thank you, Addison. Does anybody have any questions? Alright, thank you very much. Uh, next up is 4.01, Public Comment. Uh, are there any people signed up?
There's no one signed up.
Okay, well then we'll move right along to 5.01, Master Facility Study.
How about that?
And this has Chad Trowbridge and ATSNR representatives presenting.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have representatives from ATSNR, Sarah Fox and Blaine Parkes joining us tonight. Uh, they were the people doing a lot of share of our master facility study. Just a little context for everybody. Uh, this was our third version of a master facility plan. We intend to continue to update this every five years as part of our ongoing work. So, uh, I don't want to steal any thunder from what Sarah and Blaine have to present, but they went through a rather extensive facility condition analysis just to assess our facilities, both from, you know, mechanical, electrical, space considerations, all the way down to, um, meeting the needs of modern learning environment. So, it can be a little overwhelming as the figures work. Um, sometimes I think people have the impression that we don't do anything to our facilities, but a lot of our facilities are free. So, I think what you'll hear tonight is similar, uh, to what we have heard the past couple of studies. There are some facilities with some fairly significant needs and I have a turn to notice there anyways.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board before they begin? Is that up okay?
Okay.
Thanks. So, yeah, last time, at the last time we visited, we talked a lot about, um, the FCI and the findings that we, we had discovered through our analysis. And first of all, we want to go through the book and just show you the layout, how there, no, what information is in there and how to read it. Everyone got one? So, if you want to just, there's tabs that hopefully will make it easy to flip through. So, we're just going to guide you through what's in there and, uh, start that way.
Right. So, you open up into the table of contents, so that gives you your general layout of various pieces. Well.
You can return it. Um, zoom out, so it shows the whole page on your, um...
Is there? Comment.
Is there a zoom right there on the side?
I'm not seeing one over here.
I think it, slide the...
It's usually page layout.
Select.
Just Ctrl minus. Oh, he doesn't have a keyboard.
I can't imagine trying to look across the room with a mouse.
Yeah, it's really hard.
I could not do that.
Oh, it's right here on the side.
Uh-huh.
Oh, there it is.
It's hiding in the corner. Hit the escape button now to try to put in a...
Minimize the screen and then do that.
Okay, is that good?
Hold on, Drake.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
That'll work.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so you have table of contents, and that's going to give you your overall layout of what's in each of those tabs. And we're going to quickly go over some of the highlights in the facilities assessment criteria. We went over a lot of that last time, so we gave you a lot of detail about that. So, when you have some time, dig into it and look into it. You want to see the detail behind it and, uh, you know, really see some of those things that, that are out there that, that, uh, you want to be paying attention to in your facilities. That's kind of where you'll see a lot of that stuff. Uh, Section Three, Educational Adequacy Criteria, and the, the criteria that we're using to, uh, review ad adequacy. And, uh, you'll start seeing some plans and layouts, uh, when you get into Section Four, uh, which is building data and educational adequacy maps. So, you'll see site analysis, facilities analysis, some building age information, and educational adequacy information.
That's where all the plans are. So, the adequacy plans are in there and, and the FCI information is set up per building.
And I find that as always a, a nice kind of go-to, at-a-glance. You want to look, you, you look at the building and see, here's some needs in these areas and adequacy side. Maybe we're getting small rooms over here, or we've got some needs over there. Kind of got a nice at-a-glance spot to go to, you know, to give you some good information really quickly.
So, this is Homestead, this is the first one. So, you have your site plan, site efficiencies or inefficiencies, and then your facility assessment. Uh, the keynotes are all labeled on the plan, as you can see specifically in here, where we may have highlighted a specific item, and then, Blaine.
Yeah, then you get into some of the mechanical, electrical stuff. You'll, you'll see some of those notes in red, you know, those are things to start paying attention to in this particular building. And then you'll see on the electrical side, like the building's painted red on that one, except for a few areas of yellow. You know, a lot of that deals with, you know, fluorescent lighting. Fluorescence lighting is beginning to be a big thing that the EPA is trying to come down on right now. Minnesota and sixteen other states have already banned fluorescence and sale of fluorescence. I can only imagine Wisconsin's going to be shortly behind that in the next couple of years. Uh, but, but once you start getting out to 2030, 2032, that's when the fluorescent ban is going to start hitting kind of nationwide, where you're going to want to really start getting into getting more into fluor- into the LED fixtures and stuff. So, that's why you'll see that as red versus any other color on, on that particular issue.
And building age, you know, if you want to see the different ages, some buildings have many add-ons, many additions, so that will give you an idea, you know, the older, older parts of certain buildings. And then, if, this is adequacy, where we use a stoplight kind of analysis over here on the side. So, red is, is the most deficient, yellow is, no? It's, it's okay. You know, there might be some element that, that we found to be deficient, but otherwise is, is acceptable. Then green is, is good, obviously. Uh, and then, uh, the district likes to have a toilet count, understand, you know, where they're at, uh, at schools, to, to, and then, do you want to explain just quickly how they were used?
Yeah, so, wh- once you start getting into the in-depth, uh, facility condition information, this is the background that, uh, when we start looking at systems, whether they're electrical systems, mechanical systems, roofs, walls, windows, casework, flooring, and we start digging into the building and say, what's good, what's bad, what's okay? And that's where this starts playing into, into that whole aspect of it. So, we, we have in there what's, um, considered conditions one through, uh, we really concentrated one through three a lot. And then you'll see some stuff that's fours in there as well. More so on the mechanical equipment, we kind of went and tried to catalog as much of it as we could, so that way Randy would have kind of a nice catalog of stuffed reference for the future, so that way if he's ordering parts, he's, he can go to this catalog and hey, here's the, here's the model number for that piece of equipment for him. So, uh, so we did him that favor by getting that information in there for him. So, so that's us, where we have all that newer equipment in, so that's us where you see some fours and fives, you know, because it's newer equipment. And, uh, but that's where all that background goes and, and cost breakdowns. So, if you're replacing that, those parts and pieces, uh, we have that cost breakdown in there, so that way you have a budget to at least start working with. And of course, that can be inflated, inflated up as, as the district decides to do stuff. And you give us a call, we can, if it's two, three years from now, we help you guys make sure that you have the right number at that particular time, because it's currently a window of time that those are budgeted in, and then obviously it inflates up as, as time moves on. So, um, but those are things that we can easily do. And as, as we hand over the spreadsheets, as we like to do to Chad and, and his team, that, uh, we want to do some education with them, to show them the planning side of it, and, uh, and also how to move it into the future, that way they can show and see how that cost is affecting the future field.
So then, Section Five is a summary of all that data? It's more by, you know, more like?
Yeah, Section Five, if you... There it goes. Yeah, this is where now it starts breaking it down in different ways. So, in this case, we have a, a by building, and then we break it down into like four major categories. One being site work, the other one being building envelope, building interior, and building system. So, so you think about that as, you know, uh, building envelope, you know, that's your roofs and your walls and your windows. And, uh, your systems, that's your mechanical systems, your electrical system, those types of things. Your interior, meaning, uh, more of your carpet, your ceilings, your walls, and, and that kind of stuff. And then site being sidewalks and your parking lots and, and playgrounds and those types of things. So, so we break it down by building that way, so you can see it, uh, the costs are right now in 2025. So, you, we also have a high, medium, low priority in there as well, based off of our, our meeting with Chad and Randy and some others to, to start initial prioritization on that. Uh, so that shows you where those break down on a by building in the categories. And then as you keep going in here, we start breaking it down in other ways as well. And then this is, I like to call this one the, uh, the salsa chart.
This is, uh, Section Six.
Yeah, Section Six. We'll do that. So, so again, I, I like to call this the salsa chart, because, uh, again, on a by building basis, it breaks those pieces down even a little further. So now you can see it in the ADA accessibility, you know, air quality issues, under air qualities like ventilation, temperature controls, mechanical systems. And then you get general building condition exterior, general building condition interior, and then you continue, you see plumbing, electrical, program needs, safety, security type of stuff, and then site. And if, if it's white in there, that tells us that there's very little need in there. If it's green, there's a little bit more need. And if it's yellow, there's more need yet. And if it's red, that means it's a fairly, uh, significant amount of need that, uh, that is needed to address in that particular, uh, building. And then again, you can see it by category in there.
It says Green Bay area, public schools on top.
Oh, no.
So.
I missed that too.
I was, I was going, wow, they have the same name schools we do.
But the school names are right.
Oh, no. We'll get that correct.
It's okay.
Sorry about that.
It's fine.
It looks like it's our data with the wrong heading. Yeah, it's the right data. There's a header in there that someone buried in this thing that...
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Was corrected and...
Was corrected. It might have saved itself back, but...
I know. I just wanted to be first, because you, I guess the one that always...
I was, I...
I wanted to be first this time.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll, we'll reissue that, these, these, um, as an amendment, so your catch.
Luckily, it's just on that one.
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, see, I call it the salsa chart, because it looks like kind of a bowl of salsa out there, so it's kind of how it's gotten its name.
That's the easiest of chart to read.
Yes, it's a nice, easy chart.
Yeah.
Again, red, yellow, green, kind of stoplight stuff, so it's easier to draw your attention to those things that we have more needs versus things that don't really have as much need.
Alright, so, then we have our Section Seven, which I'll go over more here shortly, uh, the building options and aspirations. Uh, so I'll come back to that, just to finish going through the book. Uh, after Section Seven, then we go into our appendix, which has all the data. So, Section Eight is where the appendix starts. It has the, uh, FCI questionnaires that went out to, uh, school custodians, uh, and Randy. Uh, Appendix Two is all of our adequacy questionnaires and responses. It's pretty, it's great stuff. The staff took a lot of time in completing these and very informative, and we, we can gain a lot of knowledge from these surveys. Uh, and then, uh, we have Section Nine. Then we have Section Ten is those principal interviews, just, uh, just our notes, you know, just my handwritten notes, which is just for, for, uh, not very useful, probably spend a lot of time on, on those sheets. And then, let's see, let's get it on. And then, we have a, uh, future ready and kind of the trends that we're seeing in school design, you know, project-based learning, uh, designing for the future-ready students, is in, I can't read it. Uh, is in Section Twelve is, is that part, which is, it's pretty interesting stuff if you want to read through that. Uh, and Eleven has our standards, uh, design standards, which we utilize for the adequacy, uh, uh, building sheets, the diagrams that you'll go back to for building. We, um, identify spaces that are undersized based on these standards. We use Minnesota, uh, just because it has a very easy sort of user-friendly analysis that we, we utilize. Um, so, so it's in, interesting stuff on square footages. And then at the very end is your, uh, your enrollment projections, uh, which helps make this book super thick. Uh, that's that last section. So, going back, well, let me go back. Section Seven, are there any questions before I dive into Section Seven?
Yeah, I do have one question, I'm sorry. So, how do, how do you determine an aspirational option?
Okay, so...
I'm kind of looking, and I'm still confused.
So, we start with meeting with the executive committee, and we discuss goals and priorities for the analysis. And we complete the analysis, and then we, in order to, the, the nice thing about the options and aspirations, it really highlights the, you know, any deficiencies just by creating these options. Now, there are solutions to a problem, right? Uh, so we take what we find from the analysis, and essentially, it's our recommendations based on our, uh, conversations with the executive committee on what those priorities and goals are. So, if you go, uh, pointer. Oh, there it is. So, scroll down maybe? So, what you'll find in Part One, in the executive summary, you'll find those goals and priorities that were discussed with the executive committee. And I think we maybe went over those. Oh, yeah, we sent a survey out also, uh, just to get the board's opinion on that. It didn't get too many responses. I think it got one response. But, uh, and that, that goal was just to prioritize these items, but really, you know, maybe they're all important, so the prioritizing isn't really necessary. Uh, but those are in here. And sorry, not going to spend time zooming out at here again, so I'm not showing you everything. But in this executive summary, we go through the enrollment trends, you know, the, the history, uh, and these are from that, um, enrollment projections report, a lot of it. And then with the five-year outlook, uh, just some other just data, current enrollment districting. And then here describes, if you guys can read this page.
Aspiration, option, goal.
Yep. So, this highlights what, uh, we, uh, the goals of the options and aspirations were. Uh, so this is based on those goals and priorities from the executive committee. Number one, all the options include the priority one and two FCI, uh, costs for the maintenance of any repairs, uh, to the building. So, each, every option includes that. Uh, the second one was, you know, complete the improvements at the high school, middle school, uh, enhance teaching and learning at the elementary schools. And the reason for that is because of the priority to build further, you know, from the previous referendum equity into at the remaining schools in your district. Uh, and then, along with that, improving safety, uh, with the parking, there are some, a few schools with deficiencies and, and pickup drop-off, so those were included. That's at number three. And then, we looked at different options to centralizing the district operations, uh, with people services, corridor, chestnut, uh, and, um, the central office. Uh, and there's a few options with Chippewa High School. Uh, and then the, you know, the right sizing of school facilities. Again, things that were started at Hillcrest, middle school, and high school renovations from the last referendum. So, those, those are what the options represent.
I think you meant Stillson's here.
What did I say?
Hillcrest.
Yeah, thank you. I have Hillcrest on screen. Yeah, definitely don't mean it. Uh, so Part Two is, is basically a menu of each building option. Uh, the elementary school's very simple. You know, we just did one option for most of those. There, uh, I can, I'll go through and show you briefly what those plans look like. But this first page is the menu of those aspiration options, and then a very short summary, uh, and square footage, existing and new. And then there's a cost over here. Uh, so that's the menu. This is the little abbreviation that you'll find in the packages. So, these are the different options. Several for the central office. So, yeah, I wish I could zoom out. Uh, so when you look at these, uh, the colored orange is renovation, the blue is addition. So, this one, for instance, is Homestead. So, one of the priorities was to, if any school that has a caf- cafeteria, to build either a new gymnasium or cafeteria. So, Homestead, uh, this option, uh, has a new gymnasium. Uh, we also added a new media center, uh, with it, and some additional special ed spaces. Uh, it also, you know, adds in those elements that Stillson and, uh, middle school and high school have with some breakout space. So, we have to, you know, kind of move some things around, uh, to provide those, those, um, those, uh, amenities essentially, uh, to the school that other schools have. So, this one also has a renovation to, an option to solve their, uh, parking and bus drop-off issues at Homestead.
Could you go over Hillcrest?
Uh, yeah, Hillcrest is, uh...
HL1, I think it was the...
Oh, yeah, so this is Stillson. So, this is, HL1 is, is offering a, a new school, uh, for Hillcrest. Uh, HL2 is closing it and not building new, but redistricting. Uh, and then HL3, uh, renovates it. It, it gives, that provides those breakout spaces, small group spaces that were lacking, and it hands over a portion of Hillcrest over to the central office to bring in, uh, people services and some, like, HR from Corridor Chestnut. And then, we're proposing here just a new, uh, boardroom, because of this room is undersized for, for your needs. So, gym balls, again, you know, new gym, it only has very small gym, very small cafeteria, um, adding on for a kitchen expansion, tiny kitchen. And this, in the addition, would provide a breakout, small group spaces, and then some toilets and storage and new gymnasium. That's, Parkview, Parkview has two options. Parkview essentially just right sizes and adds in those breakout spaces and small group spaces. Uh, that's why these are, these classrooms are additions, because we're taking up that classroom space to build in those flex spaces. Also, uh, adding on, uh, ca- uh, cafeteria space and kitchen renovation, expanding the kitchen. This one also has a, um, modification to the, the bus, so the car, car would come in here and loop around, and then bus would have its own separate exiting. Now, these are concepts, keep in mind. Uh, no, there would, the, the analysis would have to be done and completed for this, but, guys, so don't get too hung up on the solutions, not surprised. But the point is, you know, you want to have a, uh, new bus, new drop-off, that's the first grid. Where those can be worked on. Uh, this is the second Parkview option. This option you'll find in, I believe it's Package Option Three, uh, where we propose to close Hillcrest, either redistrict or, um, redistrict, build, oh, yeah, redistrict or build new. Um, this option... This option for redistricting, we would add additional classroom space to increase enrollment at Parkview to handle some of those, those students from Hillcrest. That's what PV2. Southview, SV1, how are we doing on time? Are we okay? Do we have more time because we started earlier?
Southview are current, we're in charge.
If we're still talking, if you're still talking at nine o'clock, you're out.
Okay, that's fair. Okay. Now, again, right sizing, adding in those flex spaces, small group spaces. In this SV1. SV2, again, like Parkview adds additional classroom space to increase enrollment, potentially to house additional Hillcrest students. And then, middle school has one option. You'll find in the option packages that, I think it's maybe four, where we, uh, in that option, nothing is done. At the middle school, every other package has this work at the middle school included. This is the completing of the remaining areas that weren't touched in the last referendum. Updating music wing, updating your shops and CTE and art spaces. Toilet, like, changing rooms and accessibility to the locker areas by the pool and then in large fitness center. And then, this one, it is, you know, it's all-in, right? So, this option has four new tennis courts, a track. I think it did a 300-meter track. So, we couldn't make a, a 400-meter fit. So, this, this would be the alternative to that. They have a track program, but no track. So, no, these are things that came out of our conversations with staff at the middle school as, uh, things that they don't have that if they do have would provide enhanced programming at their school. This also has a, you'll see in there, also has a cafeteria expansion. I forgot to mention that. Okay, and a lot of work at the high school. New music expansion. This has a gym, additional gym, fitness addition. This, no, they have a great need at the cafeteria, very tight. So, this would include cafeteria expansion. Also, trying to build in more of those flex spaces, small group spaces, creating a commons, you know, maybe a coffee shop, kind of common space for students, expanding art, expanding facts, maybe the opportunity for culinary arts program. And, yeah. Oh, and the auto, updating the auto shop. And expanding the parking. Again, you know, these options dependent on, on maybe the options to Hillcrest. We do have a couple of options where you close Hillcrest and you hand that over to the high school site, essentially. It comes with building a new central office, I believe, is one option. But we included reworking of the, the bus loop so they could get some more visitor parking at the main entrance and then also expanding parking on the west side. Because you're, you're losing some of your, and you're tight on parking as it is. Okay, so then, I would zoom out. I think this is CO1. Yeah. So, this is the central office option. One, which brings in Chippewa Valley and expands the central office into Hillcrest. This, uh, I have some notes on here where, you know, depending on how much space you want, the Chippewa Valley program and the Corger Chestnut community programming and testing that occurs there would overlap their programming with Chippewa Valley, if you want to close Corger Chestnut. So, that's what these, these notes are attempting to explain as an alternative. But this option here keeps Corger Chestnut open. And then there's a program for the central office. And then this option is CO2. This one maintains Chippewa Valley where it is. And then, Corger Chestnut moves into a portion of space, larger central office, also for central storage, expanding the shortage on storage space. And then gymnasium for the high school. And then, central office plan three would be a new central office. And when you look at the packages, you know, they, there's, you know, you would select that one for if Hillcrest closes or, you know, there's, i- i- it's very relevant to the package that you're looking at. And then, this is central office four, which I'd mentioned before, reduces Hillcrest and expands the central office. Here's Corger Chestnut, some renovations. That's in a couple of packages. Takes out human resources and moves in CCLC into the first floor. Maybe expands some community outreach programming. Boyagers programming in there. So, now, now you get into the options. So, there's a summary page that breaks down the option and which of those building-specific options are included. The grade-out, let me see, option one includes all the elementary schools. That those are included in option two. Option three, option three's a little different because Southview and Parkview are the expanded options. So, that's the grade-out. And you can read through the summaries. And then there's a cost. There's a cost and then inflated cost, depending on when, when the work would be done. These are project costs. And so, you have your option one, which, um... Yeah, are we doing on time? Option one moves Chippewa Valley to Hillcrest, to people services, and a portion, human resources, to, from Corger Chestnut to Hillcrest. And you build new Hillcrest. This, each option includes essentially all the work at the elementary schools. And again, all of the repair and betterment that you find in the FCI that are priority one and priority two. Stop me anytime you have a question. So, then, the next slide has each option listed, the cost, and then total cost at the bottom. And then, a enrollment projection on the effects of that option packaged. And then it has subsequent different package, uh, different building-specific options. So, there's option one. Sorry, I have to scroll. Maybe I don't.
Go over there and scroll.
Go on, click.
So, then, option two. So, option two, uh, again, moves people services in Corger Chestnut to Hillcrest. Again, you're building a new Hill, uh, new Hillcrest, but Chippewa Valley stays where it's at. So, this is that central office, Corger Chestnut option, or that package. Oops. Option three, close Hillcrest and you hand over Hillcrest to the high school site. Build new central office for people services. Again, a portion of administrative spaces at Corger Chestnut. Maintain Chippewa Valley and Corger Chestnut. And, option four, reduce Hillcrest enrollment to expand the central office and move people services and HR to the central office. Still maintaining Corger Chestnut, but you can close people services. And option five, move Chippewa Valley, people services, and again, administrative spaces from Corger Chestnut to the vacated Hillcrest site. Redistrict enrollment boundaries. So, this has that Southview and Parkview, the second option that expands those two schools. And no, no other work at the middle school except for the repairing and betterment at the middle school. So, high school is still on board and option five. That's it. So, those are the options. If there's option, and even after you've looked through this, like, there's an option that you want to see, you know, you can add that to, to the book. Comments? Questions?
One question I have is, I know that I briefly mentioned the enrollment rates, but to what extent does these options take into account future enrollment declines? So, when we're looking at redistricting, I see a lot of expansions and renovations. But if we're declining enrollment, I guess in my mind, it seems to me we'd need less space. And so, I didn't really see an option necessarily that focused more on utilizing the spaces that we have rather than building new and just transitioning.
Yeah.
But I didn't know to what extent, you know, the model shows those declines over, because I mean, obviously, a hundred million, I don't think that's a this-year project. So, we're looking at a few years out. So, to what extent does your enrollment model take into effect these projects being built over a period of time?
Yeah, so, you know, when it comes to right sizing and building in equity into schools, it's, it's a question that you, as a district, should ask, you know, do you want to reduce your capacity even though you are declining? You know, is there, at, to what point do you want to reduce that capacity? And so, I was gonna pull out.
Even maintaining capacity with a reduction in enrollment has...
Yep.
Gives you more space. So, you know, in some of your models where I see that you're building additional cafeterias, I mean, all the kids are being fed as-is. And so, you know, I assume that there's an advantage in some of those models for doing those sorts of projects, but, you know, that's why I'm wondering, you know, to what extent are you considering the reduction in enrollment being that everybody is currently being fed? So, is that really a...
Mm-hmm. I can speak to that. I've worked at Homestead for a long time. Our whole schedule is dictated by when you can eat lunch and when the gym has to be used. It's not about kids and learning. It's about not having a space, a dedicated space. So, I mean, I, you know, on that one, it's a big deal not to have that. Even, even with, you know, a shifting enrollment, you still have to share that space all the time. Unless you're gonna go down to a two-section school, then it would probably be more doable, I guess.
Yeah, that, that one issue, you know, that is more based on scheduling and just, you know, time and coordination, you know, indoor recess. No, there's, there's many factors specific to that one issue that really enrollment, you know, whether or not you're decreasing or not, we would still make that recommendation.
The high school is the same way. We've had to modify our schedule just because of the room we have in the cafeteria. Cafeteria's not nearly big enough if you're gonna have two sections. Someone will tell you that some kids get fed about five minutes before the bell rings to go back to class. So, I mean, there are, definitely there's some reasons to do that. First, I want to thank you for all this. This is a lot of work. My next comments have no reflection on you. But the last few days, I've been getting a lot of phone calls, mostly from Parkview parents, that are questioning whether or not we're gonna close Hillcrest and all those kids going to Parkview. Judging on the options we see today, four of the five options mention clos- closing Hillcrest, which, if that is the intent of the district, I think we should be a little more forthcoming about that. In the meantime, building a new Hillcrest would be great, but there are a couple of things, like, for example, where are you gonna put it, right, that would be probably the hardest. And second, convincing people to build a new $35 million building isn't going to work. So, and I did notice too, that Parkview would have to be expanded to accommodate, I think, 414 to 644. So, having a, having an elementary school with 600 and some elementary students might seem efficient, but I would think that that would be not a, a healthy place for kids. It's just way too many. The other thing that I'm gonna remind everybody is, is that we now have new schools moving in. And the two things that they promise everyone is discipline and class size is being reduced. So, whatever we do, I hope we're careful not to start packing them into certain buildings because we want to close one said building. So, that was not intended for you. That was intended for people that are watching and the rest of the board members. So, but I, I, I love the thoroughness of this and it gives, gives me a lot to read.
Yes. A lot of late-night reading, for sure.
I don't think late-night.
Are there any other questions? And I would agree with what Mr. Martino said. A lot of work and consideration obviously went into this and it gives us a lot to consider and figure out what our options are. But does anybody else have any other questions?
Is there a specific area that addresses, you know, 10, 20 years out enrollment rates for these specific models? I mean, I see that you have...
For these options?
With the options, wait.
With the options. Uh, no, we do not project out that far. I would think, you know, if you want an option that does not expand and actually closes, like, reduces the number of sections, that is an option we can create and give you enrollment capacity.
Because with your model here, you're, you're calculating at five, down 5% in the last decade, essentially. And I don't know what the projection is for the next 10 years, but I would assume it's similar or at least where it's at. And so, I would be interested to know, you know, if we are projecting an, an additional 5% decrease, you know, that's another 500 kids. So, what would the options look like knowing that we're not gonna complete all these projects in one or two years? I mean, it's gonna be a decade built out anyways. And so, really, my initial thought is, without having thoroughly read through this, would be whatever model is selected, it would be a good idea to have an understanding of if we're choosing that now, but it's going to be built out over the next 10 years. In 10 years, we have a different pupil population and need then than we do now. So, I just am more interested to know how this model looks in the future that we're building it for.
I think that's part of the motivation behind us developing a 25-year plan and updating it every five years so that we can respond to some of those changing conditions. That's, you know, in a perfect world, you know, snap... That's, in a perfect world, snap your finger and all of this gets done over a minute. Pick whatever plan you want, right? But, the idea is that we're, you know, working towards some concepts, whatever they might be. But, a big piece, and I guess, you know, I, I know these guys like to take heat sometimes for what they recommend, but when you put that lens of efficiency, adequacy, rightsizing our learning environments for all buildings, it takes more room. And I think what I see here is that, you know, if, if we're gonna get a little bit smaller, when we do right-size our facilities, we maybe don't have too much space right now. When we look to the future, that might be something we need to reassess a few years out.
And let's be honest, a five-year study on population could be totally wrong. It's been in the past. We can only just kind of plan for five years and then keep an eye on ten, fifteen, and twenty.
Talking about kids that haven't been born yet.
Yes, or you could have conditions around the country where people actually wanna move to Wisconsin. So, you know, there's a lot of things that could play into this, but I think it was, somebody said that this is like, if we were gonna fix every nut and bolt in the district, this is kind of our, our wish list. So, I, yeah. So, I, I, I see some of the plans where some parts of it are, are very necessary and maybe other parts are just, right, oh, yeah, it'd be nice to have that, but definitely a larger cafeteria at the high school would certainly be something that would have to be considered.
You should just, oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say in prioritizing and finances, like what Dennis said, probably not a next year pro- or future project.
Probably not.
Well, I'm gonna ask Chad a question, is that really to do any of this, we're gonna have to probably at some point ask the public for help. We can't do this on the operational budget that we currently have.
Some of the repair and betterment, we can, we can do out of our budget, and we'll plan to do that. But in terms of aspirations, yeah, it would be impossible to do that without a referendum.
So, so that's, that's always the fly in the pudding.
I don't know, but it can be-
Fly in the ointment?
I don't know.
Maybe it's a spoon in the pudding, I forgot that saying.
Right, well, thank you.
Can I just add one, one more thing, just so, for your knowledge, if you look in, on the tables of the enrollment tables and some of the options, we do a reduced enrollment for future-ready space, spaces allocation. That shows a reduction, what that number might be for capacity, so.
And also remember, we have a lot of kids that open and roll out. Economic situations change, we could see some of those kids coming back. I mean, that's, I mean, not that it's likely, but that's certainly a possibility.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you for your time and for all this work. There's some reading material.
Thank you. Yes.
Next up is six point oh one, Southview elementary showcases.
Promise not to be as long.
Sorry, that's not me.
It's every five years, you get, you're only a-
I heard you were gonna sing for us, though.
What?
Sing for us.
Not me. That wasn't me.
You wouldn't want me to sing either.
Alright, so our focus area was social studies, and I wanna thank anybody who came for our learning walk. It was a great afternoon and a great visit, so thank you for coming. Today, we're, I'm just gonna do a brief look at our social studies data, talk about some instructional strategies, celebrate student engagement with some short videos, and then I have some student feedback and comment themes. So, first off, and Katie's not here, but she helped me put together some data, which I appreciate. So, looking at this slide here. This shows students who are scoring in the meeting or advanced range on the forward test. You can see the trend over the past three years. It shows that our students have consistently been making gains in the area of social studies on the state report card, and we're consistently above the state, the state average as well each year. And then this slide here breaks it down into the social studies strand, strand areas, so poli sci, geography, history, behavioral science, and economics, and you can see where our students score, and then the state average as well. So consistently above the state average in that, in those areas as well. So then, moving on from data. The instructional practice, some of the different instructional practices that our buildings use would be inquiry-based learning. Students investigates maybe historical questions. We have some project-based learning in our buildings too, creating presentations, models, or different timelines. We integrate technology, a lot of virtual field trips or interactive maps, things like that. And then, we also collaborate or partner with ELA and integrate social studies in our ELA curriculum as well. This slide here shows, this chart shows how our ELA curriculum complements both social studies and science. So, throughout ELA, you'll see that we hit some of our social studies topics. We don't, not complete like very deep, but it gives the students background knowledge to be able to dig in deeper within social studies. So specifically in second grade, you learn about the American West or civil rights heroes. So I have a few videos to show, they're just, they're short. The first one is a student explaining, it's a second grade student, that, have I been clicking, or have you been clicking? I've been clicking, right? I've been doing it, okay. I was like, maybe I just think I am, and she's over there.
Magic.
So the first video shows a student explaining her favorite project. She's a second grade student, and they had learned about the Plains Indians in ELA, and then she's just talking a little bit about her project, so we can watch just a little bit of that one.
So, the reason why we made the tripwire is because we were learning about the Plains Indians in wit and wisdom. So, in science, Mr. Schneider decided that we should make a tripwire because, uh, we were like, because it was cool, we could make one, and we were learning about it in wit and wisdom. So we started off with a big bucket of sticks, and we got sticks, and we broke them up if we needed. And then, we do a special type of tie, and we tied them together.
Tell me what the name of the tie was?
Uh, I don't, it had a name, but I don't know what it was. And the person would pull from here, and me and Ellie haven't gotten this tied down, but, um, this is what it would look like when you're done.
And then the, the next slide, or the next ones that I have are from a fifth grade classroom, and it's, their focus is on economics, so you can kinda see the difference between the types of lessons. I will say, she showed, she tied, she tied the knot and it took a very long time. I thought it was gonna be a lot quicker, but it did, she got it though, she did get it. Okay, so the next one is the fifth grade examples here.
Your economic decision is, would you consume, would you buy a PS five? And just a little, let's get a little more information on PS five. So PS five right now at Best Buy, we're looking at four hundred twenty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. So, this is a personal question, I appreciate it enough, we don't share your answers out loud, it's for yourself. And you're going ahead. Would the benefits that you'd get from spending four hundred and, let's call it twenty-five dollars on this thing, be worth it? The other things that you could no longer buy because you're spending four hundred twenty-five dollars on this, you can't buy all your stuff because money's going towards this, is this, wouldn't this be a good purchase for you? Would the benefits of this thing for you outweigh the cost of four hundred and twenty-five dollars? I'm gonna want your opinion on this, and I'm gonna have you weigh it, and I'm happy, this is where we need our pro look. So go ahead and open up to our social studies Google classroom, and we wanna find a topic, economics. Once you find our classroom, scroll down to economics, PS five padlet, in the lower right corner, there's an addition sign. Click on that addition sign, and then you're able to post your thoughts. So in there, in that post, I'm looking for you to tell me what kind of economical decision you would make. Does purchasing a PS five outweigh the cost? So if you go to our social studies Google classroom, underneath economics.
Then you can click to the next one.
Yep, subject can just be PS five. Cause you have varying answers up here. I like that, um, one person would go, yes, still understand the idea of consumption. When we're talking economics, doesn't mean to eat, it means to buy. So, no, you should not try to eat a PS five, you're right, yeah, you don't wanna consume that stuff. Consumption means we're talking economics. Consuming is to buy, so I'm seeing a lot of notes. Seeing some yeses though, yes, because if you have a good TV, you can run better FPS, whatever that means. Now I know, now I know. I saw somebody said yes, because it brings me a lot of joy, it relieves my stress, good idea. Some people commenting, no, there's other things to spend your money on, food, charity, things for your family. Then somebody asked, is it selfish to spend money on a PS five for yourself? And again, this comes back to needs and wants, and we talked about last time. If you have the money, if you have thousands of dollars saved, and you think, you know, I'm gonna take some of that money, and yeah, I'm gonna buy myself a PS five, I have the money to do it, and if I spend it, I'm not really taking money away from other things that I need to, like Astrid mentioned, well, you still gotta pay your bills, you still have other things to spend money on, and you broke these, and that's absolutely true. And all that stuff needs to be thought of when you make the decision. How much money do I have? How much money do I make? Is spending this much thing on that good, on a PS five, is that gonna prevent me from paying other things or buying other things that I actually need? I need to pay my bills, I need to buy a thing for myself, so those are decisions you have to make. So if one person's saying yes, that's fine, if they have the money to do it, and it does-
So I wanted to just give you a little glimpse of what you'll see if you come, and just a lot of deep conversation that can come out of that. And then, I surveyed the students and just asked them, why is it important to teach social studies? Or what's your favorite thing in social studies? And can I do the next, will that move?
Your economic decision is, would you consume, would you buy a PS five? Cause you have-
Well, and I have them, I can just read some of the, the quotes that the kids sent. So, one, the business jobs we're learning about will help me pick a job when I grow up. I like listening how to be good with money because I have an idea of how to be good with money, and I like to compare my thoughts to the lessons, like how me and my two other friends are saving for a cheap car that we can use when we're sixteen. Was very specific. I learned how to properly spend my money. I have watched the news and learned about what's happening around the world. My favorite social studies project is the project where we create a website for a business that we create. And we watched some of that during our learning walk too. I learned how to tell, I learned how to tell people the truth without making them upset or mad. That's a great life skill. I've learned that judging fast is wrong. Tried to get to know them more first. So those were a few comments that the kids brought. And then, I, oh, this is me now. So then, of all the comments that I got, I wanted to find common themes. I thought it was interesting what came up. So the first was engagement with practical learning and real-world applications. Many students mentioned enjoying activities like making a business, learning about economics, understanding government branches and saving money. They value hands-on projects and real-world skills that relate to their future, such as creating websites and understanding financial concepts. So that really came through in their quotes or their feedback. An appreciation for history and cultural stories. Comments reflect a strong interest in historical and cultural learning, such as the Revolutionary War. And that, this comes through in, during our ELA, through wit and wisdom. They learn a lot about the Native American history and how America was formed. And, oh, I said that, and then many of the topics that are explored during ELA time. And then there was also a clear focus on relationships and personal growth. Several of the kids mentioned the importance of kindness, being a good friend, standing up for others, and learning not to judge people too quickly. This suggests a theme of value, valuing social, emotional learning and personal development with, within the classroom. It was really good for me to, I, I liked having the topic of social studies. I think sometimes I, we forget, like, how important it is, and it was really good to walk through and, and reflect on it, so. Thank you. Any questions?
That's what I was just gonna say.
Thank you, Janet, your kids, the, the kids were fun and they were engaging, we were just seeing what they're up to.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
I wanna see then, how long it took her to do the knot, but then-
It, it was like, very long.
She did it, right?
She did it, yeah.
Alright, moving on to seven point oh one. Academic performance, social studies. Report part S two, one zero. And I think I'm supposed to go to, members of the board have received the CEO's monitoring report on academic performance, social studies. It is now the board's responsibility to consider the report as evidence of reasonable organizational progress in this area.
Director of Curriculum Instruction, Sue Kern, has developed this monitoring report for our review. This time, I would ask her to provide an overview of the report.
Thank you, Mr. Trover. So, based on the results criteria that I share in this monitoring port, report, it is my determination that we are making reasonable progress, with noted exceptions in social studies and each articulated target set forth by you, the board. The first target for reasonable progress is that the, on the Wisconsin Forward Examine Social Studies, we will increase the percentage of students scoring meeting proficiency or advanced. And the second target is that on the Wisconsin State Forward Examine Social Studies, we will decrease the percent of students scoring developing or approaching. Social studies is assessed at the state level on the forward exams in grades four, eight, and ten. The results of the twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four administration of the Wisconsin Forward Exam have been provided to you. In social studies, our student overall proficiency percentage increased, as Janet showed, at the fourth grade levels and dropped slightly at the eighth and tenth grade levels. The number of students scoring proficient or advanced at fourth grade increased by two point nine percent. And again, you saw that in the graph that Janet shared. The percentage of students scoring proficient or advanced at the eighth grade level dropped a little bit by point eight and by two point seven at the high school level. In social studies, our student overall non-proficiency percentages decreased at fourth grade and increased at the eighth and tenth grade levels. At the fourth grade level, the percentage of non-proficient students dropped by three point one percent. At eighth grade, the percentage of non-proficient students increased by three point six, and at the tenth grade level by four point four percent. It should be noted that although there was a decline in the percentage of our eighth grade and tenth grade students meeting proficiency from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four, the percentage of our students meeting grade level expectations exceeded the state average with fifty-nine point six percent of our students meeting proficiency standards and the percentage of students across the state meeting levels at fifty-three point four percent. We were above the state average by nine point two percent at the fourth grade level, one point seven percent at the eighth grade level, and seven percent at the tenth grade level respectively. 1.7% at the eighth grade level, and 7% at the 10th grade level respectively. The third target for reasonable progress is that on all standard-based assessments, we will increase the percentage of students achieving proficiency in the priority standards for social studies. Formative and summative classroom assessment results are generated by common classroom assessments and are, are analyzed by our instructional staff to make instructional decisions at the classroom level, which is the most impactful on student learning. The source of student achievement information also provides insight into which students may benefit from an intervention or an enrichment opportunity. The data below, or the data that I shared with you reflects the end of course proficiency scores for 22 through 2024. The percentages indicate the percentage of students who met proficiency at the end of the year standards taught and assessed at that time. The proficiency benchmark is 80% of students meeting proficiency of the identified priority standards at the universal level. There was an increase in the percentages of students in grades one through five meeting that proficiency level at the end of year learning targets set forth by every grade at the elementary level. And as mentioned before, a strong universal level of instruction programming meets the needs of the 80% of those learners. This correlates with the results that we saw in the forward proficiency levels in fourth grade. At the middle level, there was also an increase at each grade level, six through eight. However, only sixth grade had 80% or more of its students meeting the proficiency, um, benchmarks at the end of the year. At the high school levels, we continue to see a high level of student achievement percentages in our required social studies classes. Our commitment to improvement, um, in the area of social studies in phases four through seven of our curriculum process. Phases four through seven focus on the continued review and revision of our developed universal curriculum. This includes data reviews of common assessment outcomes and making adjustments to lessons and assessments based on those student outcomes and inputting those revisions into our online embark. A significant amount of time and energy has been dedicated by our teachers to entering all of our courses in social studies to the topic level in our curriculum platform, so that our updated curriculum is transparent and accessible for all teachers who teach social studies. We continue to analyze our assessment data at the district level and building levels to make determinations on what standards of our tested core content areas that our students are mastering and those standards that seem to be challenging for our students. I provided you a forward exam item analysis spreadsheet that we are utilizing to take a deep dive into the Wisconsin Forward questions and specific areas where our students struggle. Our instructional specialists have been meeting with, um, the teachers and the academic chairs to go through the data analysis, so that, um, additional changes, questions, those types of things can be, changed and utilized prior to the next assessment window. By understanding the areas for improvement, um, our teachers are able to adjust their lessons, units, and assessments, uh, in these areas. Teachers are also able to identify assessment question types and do additional practice with the students, engaging in assessment design, and that better aligns with our forward exam structure. At the elementary level, we are seeing beautiful games in the area of social studies. We credit the continued achievement levels to the increase in rigor that is expected of our elementary students in the areas of reading and writing, both of which appear very heavily in the social studies portion of the Wisconsin Forward. The curriculum task force and the social studies academic chairpersons continue to provide coaching and facilitation to their colleagues aligned to the prioritization of academic standards and the articulation of the learning targets in the common formative assessment process, ensuring that our local common assessments do align to the prioritized standards and that the feedback from our assessments continues to drive force of the instructional process around social studies proficiencies in K through 12. Additionally, Amanda Hill-Hobley, one of our instructional specialists, is working closely with our 612 social studies teachers on collecting inventory of our Act 266 and Act 31 requirements to ensure that we are in compliance with both state statutes. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Kern. At this time, I ask for the acceptance of the monitoring.
And I would look for a motion and a second to accept the monitoring.
Motion.
Motion by Martino, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Fair. All those in favor of accepting the monitoring report, so we can discuss it and accept ownership of it, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The monitoring report is now available for questions and discussion. Are there any questions for Ms. Kern?
What, do you have any particular, um, I know in your report it shows it kinda had a slight dip, um, from prior year to this year. Any particular reason for that or that you know?
So, no. To be honest, so every year when we get the results back, we're looking very closely at the types of questions and the themes associated with the questions on the Wisconsin Forward exam. Um, the spreadsheet that I linked for you is new this year for us and really provides us great detail, more so than we ever have as far as what particular questions students are really struggling in. Um, what we're finding is that on the Wisconsin Forward, one of the types of questions that, um, our students did not fare well on is where they had to have select multiple, uh, answers. And so our teachers recognize that they don't do that in any of their assessments with the students. So one of the things that they're doing is making adjustments to their own common assessments to put questions that students may see on the Wisconsin Forward exam and to have them have some practice with those types of questions. They're also looking at, um, the sequencing of the courses and when, um, when students are gaining access to the particular areas and what time of year. So we administer the Wisconsin Forward typically the end of March, beginning of April. There are whole sections of, um, students who have not had their required social studies class until the fourth term, who may not have even had exposure to certain concepts, um, before they're, um, taking that exam. So we're looking at how do we embed those concepts earlier throughout ninth and, um, you know, ninth grade courses to assure that students at least have a level of exposure to those learning targets before they take the Wisconsin Forward.
Fair enough.
Any other questions?
How about our marginalized groups like our free reduced, spec ed, how are they performing?
Yep, so they in all areas consistently are not performing at the same level of as all of our students, but they are increasing in their, um, their scores. So they're showing growth, but when you look at just achievement, they're not achieving at the same levels. Um, but they are showing growth in all of those areas.
But comparison to state, are they comparable?
Above the average, yep. In social studies, in all of the tested grades four, eight, and 10, we continue to score above the state average in social studies in all areas. The reason why I said with noted exception is because we did see a decline internally with the percentage of students who were meeting those proficiency levels on the test. So we saw a decline at middle and high school, but we were still above the state average. So that's the rationale for my interpretation.
Any other questions?
If I could just add one more thing, and I know that Janet, sorry. Janet, Janet alluded to that too, is that, um, we're working really hard with curriculum to do a lot more integration. Um, and so looking at our content areas not being siloed, but really being integrated. We're seeing that at the elementary level, middle and high school level, and that has made a significant impact on how well our students are doing. So even though we don't have necessarily a social studies text at the elementary level, what they're gaining from our ELA curriculum and through the other experiences that are provided to them, they're gaining in a better understanding of, especially in the social studies area, all of those different strands of social sciences that are really important. So that work will continue.
Thank you. No other questions? Okay, then, uh, I would look for a motion to either accept the monitoring report. I'm sorry, not accept it. Move that the district has made reasonable progress, reasonable progress, or has not made reasonable progress, or has made reasonable progress with noted exceptions.
I move that the district has made reasonable progress, that's my motion.
Is there a second?
We will have it with noted exceptions.
That's what, that was my recommendation.
I make a motion that the district has made reasonable progress with noted exceptions.
And because there wasn't a second, then we don't have to vote on that.
So Peggy, Peggy ups me again, right?
If you wanna look at it that way.
Yeah, I do.
Um, motion by McKillop to note that the move that the district has made reasonable project, progress with noted exceptions. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Martino. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of, uh, noting that the district has made reasonable progress with noted exceptions regarding report R-21D regarding academic performance, social studies, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next up is OE9 communicating with the board. And, uh, and turn the page. Members of the board have received the CEO's monitoring report on OE9, excuse me, communicating with the board. It's now the board's responsibility to consider the report as evidence of compliance in this area.
Thank you, Vice President McIlum and members of the board. I'm pleased to present the January 2025 OE monitoring report regarding board communications on Mr. Holmes' behalf. Our comprehensive review demonstrates full compliance across all 12 operational expectations. Throughout the past year, we've maintained consistent, transparent, and equitable communication through our established channels, including monthly board considerations, documents, and our Board Docs platform, which ensures equal access to information for all board members. Notable accomplishments include our proactive media relations management and thorough reporting on significant instructional program modifications. We've successfully communicated major initiatives, including a possible JROTC implementation, Act 20 early literacy intervention legislation, and our secondary math curriculum review. Our financial reporting remains strong with no significant transfers requiring board approval during the fiscal year. Looking ahead, while maintaining full compliance, we're committed to three key improvements. Enhancing our crisis communication protocols within our emergency operations plan, potentially implementing more robust tracking systems for curricular program modifications, and strengthening our cybersecurity incident reporting procedures. This report reflects our ongoing commitment to effective board communication and transparent district operations. I'm happy to address any questions you may have about specific aspects of the report, those that I can speak confidently on, uh, and I'm happy to provide, uh, Mr. Holmes with any clarifications for the board who may need to address upon his return. Having said that, uh, at this time, I would ask for the board's acceptance of the monitoring report.
And I would look for a motion to accept monitoring, monitoring report OE9 communicating with the board as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Fair, is there a second?
Second.
Second by McKillop. Uh, now the, uh, monitoring report, I'm sorry, the OE9 report has been accepted by the board, and this is a time when we can ask. That would be a good idea, thank you. So if, uh, we could take a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? See, this is my door here. This would normally have been my job, wait, we haven't voted yet. Now, the board has accepted the report and it's time that, um, board members can ask additional questions or give clarification or anything like that. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question, just cause we ran out of time at that November meeting. Um, I don't know if there's any plan to do a mid-year on the, um, strategic plan and district surveys.
Our, our plan for this year, our work plan, was not to have a mid-year progress update. Uh, we are working on some follow-up, uh, doing some deeper dive with our administrative team. We may have an opportunity to do some presenting on that. We're wrestling with mid-year versus if we get so close to year end, we'll just do a year-end.
Buildings and departments though are sharing results and looking at that with their staff and their department members. So for instance, in my department, we had our meeting yesterday and we went through our entire scorecard that we developed, um, as a, as a group. And then we made any shifts to our current actions that we have been working on, on our mid-year results.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I would look for a motion, uh, either to say the district is in compliance with monitoring report OE9 communicating with the board, the district is not in compliance, or the district is in compliance with noted exceptions. What's your pleasure?
I move that the district is in compliance on monitoring report OE9 communicating with the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by McKillop, second by Fair, is there any additional discussion? This time we'll, I remember we have to vote. So, all those in favor, uh, find, to the finding that the district is in compliance with monitoring report OE9 communicating with the board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Next up is, uh, the board consent agenda. Is there any, um, request to remove any agenda item from the board's consent agenda for separate consideration? Then I would, um, ask for a motion to approve the board consent agenda as presented.
Motion to accept the board consent agenda.
Motion by Martino, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Fair. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Board's consent agenda is approved. Next up is the superintendent's consent agenda. Is there any, um, request to remove an agenda item from the superintendent's consent agenda for separate consideration? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Fair, is there a second?
Second.
Second by McKillop, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the superintendent's consent agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. There are, for 11.01, nothing was requested to be removed. 11.02, nothing was requested to be, um, removed. So we're up to 11.03, consideration of communication meeting notes. I don't know, who is the chair?
Steve.
Steve, okay.
Dave.
Well, he's not here, um, obviously, and I think- Well, he's not here, um, ob- obviously, and I think Dennis is going to be presenting a policy. So Dave, would you be willing to, uh, communicating with the, the communication committee meeting?
Uh, yes, um, a lot of it, well, I should say about half and half. The first half was on the board learning walk. I unfortunately didn't attend the last one, I should have, but, um, but anyway, they talked about the successes of it, about how we could maybe better shape it in the, in the future, but I think everybody that was at the meeting kind of agreed that it was, uh, it was a good start. We just kind of have to get, get everybody used to it, get it down, and, um, and it'll work fine. And then the other half, we basically, uh, talked about the North, um, um, the fair booth participation. That was, uh, the conversation kind of went all over the place. Some people, uh, liked it, some people didn't like it, some wanted modifications. So we didn't really come to an agree, uh, I shouldn't say an agreement, a consensus. So they were going to do some, um, polling, right, survey? And I haven't seen the survey results yet, but that's what we kind of left it, so.
So far, there's only one response on the survey, so I did, I did resend it, what? There's one response, and I don't see, I can't see who sent it, so.
Well, I couldn't get on it at first, so I copied.
I think I did, yeah.
So that makes me, that's why I'm wondering, sorry, that's why I kind of wondered.
We had a couple of them come out, but.
I can do it again, but. Because the first time I went to do it, it wasn't, you had to have, uh, it wasn't shared. So I want to do it, I could read it, but I couldn't interact with it. So I just copied and pasted and put my little X's where they belonged, so.
I'll take a look at that.
But if not, I can do it over again. That's fine. And, um, uh, talk, uh, talked a little bit at the very end about the Hillcrest playground and what a nice job the PTO has done, raising quite a bit of money, and, um, also talked about in the same vein, the booster clubs pro- uh, progress on the, the fitness center. Those were more just discussions, there wasn't really anything to determine at that point, but, anyway, so.
I see four responses, so if you did it, I got it.
Sharon, you were going to ask a question?
Um, I was. What kind, I mean, you said, you talked about Hillcrest's progress. Have they raised enough?
The last time I talked to them, they had raised fifty-four thousand dollars, and they had potentially, uh, even more money. Well, they had, um, organizations lined up. They just haven't had the time to follow through with all those, but they're expecting some, even some more, right, donations. I, I didn't ask how much the playground's going to cost, but, um, that seems like a significant portion, probably not enough to pay for all of it, but, um, but anyway, that's, um, they've been doing fundraising for nine months now, and so they're, they're pretty proud of themselves. I, I, that's a lot of money to raise.
It should be.
Yes, so, and mishandling the PTO for, um, um, the PTO lady, if I can call her that, she's going to kill me. She is, uh, she's a dynamo. She just keeps, uh, keeps working hard to get, uh, things for Hillcrest, so.
That's wonderful. Anybody have any questions regarding the communication mini-meeting notes? All right, well then I would look for a motion to approve the meeting notes, um, from January ninth, twenty twenty-five, for the communication committee.
Uh, motion to accept.
Motion by Martino, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Fair. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Great. Next up is eleven point oh four, consideration of policy committee meeting notes. You weren't at the communi- communication committee meeting either, so it was a good thing I didn't ask you.
It is, yeah. Um, I thought that was intentional, to fool me.
No, I'll, I'll admit, I didn't notice till afterward.
But yeah, the policy committee meeting went well, um, you know, we, I think, the Title IX being reverted back to the twenty twenty was, um, probably the biggest, most newsworthy thing that kind of has happened since the last meeting anyways. But I think we made good progress on the, the other policies that we looked over for social media stuff and, um, the disciplinary, um, policies that we have, so. I think it all went, went pretty good. I, uh, don't really know what to say other than that. I guess it went well. I think we've got some actions to bring forward in the next meeting, so, uh, all looking pretty good. Questions, Dave?
Yeah, I do have a question. Uh, it says there is no debate in the future about what an employee actually said. What does that mean?
Means we can't talk.
No, but when we have a disciplinary meeting when we're in here, we can't talk about it then?
Well, I think, uh.
Everything's confidential. We don't talk about anything unless we're.
Oh, no, it's, it's, with that particular policy, um, it's. Yeah, it's just specific to the recordings of those, so.
There's one official record.
Yes.
Okay.
I, maybe it's saying because of the recording, there is no debate in the future about what the employee said. Is that what, okay.
Okay, that, I'm.
Because the way, I was like, I don't know what that means either, so I'm glad you asked. All right, any other questions regarding the minutes? Okay, then I would look for a motion to approve the policy committee meeting minutes from January twenty seventh. That was just yesterday, right? As presented.
Motion to accept.
Well, it looks like Ms. Jasper beat you to it, but you could be the second.
I'm always second. That's my, that's my life.
Always. All right, any further discussion? Those in favor of approving the policy committee meeting notes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next up is twelve point oh one, budget monitoring. And that would be you. In your regular position, not your fill-in.
Thank you. Uh, you have the, the standard list of reports for your viewing. Uh, all of these are as of January fifteenth. Per policy, uh, we provide this update to you at least once per year, um, at the January meeting. So I'm just going to kind of cover some highlights. First, if you would look at budget source summary, uh, it lists where our revenues at, or as of just kind of past the midpoint of the year. And this, what you see is a fairly detailed list of revenues. As you are all aware, state aid and property taxes are a bulk of our revenue. Projected to be under budget in some areas and over budget in a few others, which is actually fairly common for this time of year. And I don't have a ton to report, uh, at this time, other than this is the time of year where we start to receive our tax levy money, and that is filtering in nicely. Overall, which projected to be slightly over at year end. Next, if we could look at budget object summary, again, this is as of January fifteenth. It lists our expenditures in a real detailed version of the what, if you will. There are some overages and underages here as well. Uh, again, this year, and it's kind of been a consistent theme for us the past few years, if we look at two forty-one medical, uh, this again for us this year is trending a little bit high. We will say, though, it is a new deductible year, so it can have an impact as we turn the calendar year here as well. Right now, our utility costs are trending a little bit high. Part of that is just cost of utilities. So as we look at year end, uh, we, we would expect to be slightly under in expenditures at, at this point in time. Couple other higher-level reports, uh, we have a budget function report, the next one I'd like you to look at. It's summarized by program category, consistent with object and source reports. Uh, there are some overages and underages, but overall, uh, things look pretty good. Obviously, again, we'll have to keep a particular eye on that medical area. Uh, next, budget function summary, uh, this is again by major program category, a very, very high level. Consistent, uh, some overages and underages that you can see, but again, overall, uh, I think this looks pretty decent for this time of year. There's also some other, uh, backup reports for your viewing. If you'd like to take a more, uh, deeper dive or get more granular, uh, expend, executive expenditure summary, executive revenue summary. Sharon loves it when I say my favorite report, the school board summary by object. So at this point, uh, from my perspective, I think things are tracking pretty well. Other than that medical area, as I mentioned before, you know, a new calendar year, a new deductible year, that does have an impact. There are a lot of variables here that are, are well beyond our control. Couple of other areas that we're watching in addition to utilities that I had mentioned is staffing, overtime, you know, just kind of as we, we utilize labor here moving forward. Uh, so I will update you again in the summer. Uh, there's a lot of fiscal year in front of us, but overall, things are looking pretty good, uh, from my perspective, from a fiscal standpoint. So I, we don't have any transfer recommendations or adjustments for you at this time, but we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Trowbridge?
No, I appreciate the, the mid-year update, so thank you for that.
I agree.
I love that school board summary.
See? It's a trend.
Kids are obsessed.
Okay, moving on to twelve point oh two, compensation study update, uh, Director De Nier.
Well, thanks for a few more minutes of your time tonight. This is just our January update. Um, I am going to also include not only the groups that are being studied, but just a brief overview of the process work that's been going on in the background as well. So district services, um, school nurses, OTs, PTs, SLPs, school psychs, and co-curriculars are under study this year. We have finalized our job descriptions, and I'm meeting, um, this week, which is potentially taking place at the February meeting with the staff and the review cycle, um, to just let them know kind of how the numbers rolled out, um, and then sharing that with you as well tonight. Um, I'll come back to you in February with any updates based on your feedback and further conversation with Mr. Trowbridge, the final recommendation in March, and then final meetings with the employees, and, um, bringing the balanced budget forward in April. Um, so right now, again, these are the groups that we are studying. Um, if we were to stay on our current scale, um, it would be an increase of around sixty-three thousand dollars that we would need to, uh, budget for. If we, um, use the fifty-first percentile, which is our common practice and within our process, um, it would be an increase of a hundred forty-one thousand roughly. Um, I did include the sixty-first percentile just because that was a decision made for hourly staff, so I just wanted to provide that information to you as well, so about a hundred and seventy-two thousand increase. Um, I did, uh, share back in October, I believe, that those highlighted groups in blue are currently on the teacher's scale, and so see an increase every three years after, um, performance reviews. And, um, we had opted to move them into this group with the school nurses and school psychs because those ones in blue are also very hard to fill positions, um, and so we felt like we needed to remove them from the scale, um, for our teachers, from our teaching scale, just because their requirements for their certification and licensure, um, does require additional schooling that our teachers are not required to have, um, so that's why, um, they're in there.
DSS?
District Services Staff, so.
How come school counselors aren't here?
Because we have not moved them over to this one.
Only because of the additional, you know, you're required to have a master's degree to have that licensure, okay.
I think that that is a very good point. I think that in my mind, I was, um, grouping the OT, PT more the medical field as opposed to the school counselor field, but I don't know that, that's not something we can explore moving forward. They, they will be studied next year as part of the teachers, and so I think that would be another time when that conversation could come up, and they also might be impacted differently with, um, the final proposal that the compensation process committee brings forward. Sorry.
Nope, you go on, I can ask it one more time.
Go ahead, if it's here and it starts from here.
Yeah, so I know that the district gives us stipend for national board.
Yep.
And I don't think OTs are required anymore, but I think SLPs are. Is that above or is that considered in this?
So now we, because we moved them off of the teacher's scale, we took a, took away, in a sense, that additional stipend because the compensation study that we did, it's now built in. Um, and so again, they wouldn't go back and pay either, even though those might feel like they're removed, they're now built into their scale. Other questions? And, and the reason, just, it was confusing for me at first, but the, you'll see the current scale for OT, PT, and social workers, that it doesn't cost anything if we were staying on our current scale, but that's because they're in that three-year rotation right now, and they, they don't move, that no one in that, those two groups are in an evaluation year, um, so that's strange that that would happen. Co-curriculars, um, just looking at, uh, some percentage increases is what the committee that has come together around co-curriculars has looked at. So that would be the, um, cost, uh, to us if we were to make any increases in our co-curricular contracts. So again, February, you've got a pretty decent cost out right now, but if we need to do any fine-tuning or tweaks, uh, Mr. Trowbridge and I will meet on that between now and our February meeting. Again, I'll bring forward the final proposal, um, in March, that would then be included in our April balanced budget. Questions on the, the group that's in, the groups, rather, that are in study right now? Um, and then this is just that overall compensation process work. So we've taken some time, um, Mr. Trowbridge has provided, um, some information around school funding and our current process for our committee members to review. We've engaged in conversation about potential shifts to our current process. Um, I still feel that the sense I get in meeting with that group is they would like to see, um, those who have a successful evaluation experience some sort of increase in pay at a set increment each year, um, regardless of the group that they're in. They, they do like the financial incentive to continue their further education connected to their job. If adjustments, or when adjustments, rather, are made to compensation, trying to figure out a way that returning staff who may see an increase are placed, um, at a higher rate than new hires because they would have a year of service or more, um, and so working through that, um, in our conversation. Uh, they do have some interest in doing some communication with our elected officials about school funding and the challenges that that presents, and we have a meeting, um, on the calendar for February to continue our work.
Well, I have to say, I think, um, I think, pivoting, I don't know what other word to use, to meaning an increase in pay each year if you have a suc- successful performance evaluation, makes way more sense to me. I think it's easier to keep up with, because otherwise, they can go three or four years without getting, uh, an increase, and by then you could be way, way behind the meatball. I understand that percentage increase can create budget issues, don't get me wrong, Ted, I get that completely. But, um, and I also think that making sure that the salary compression, you know, that the issue when the adjustments are made, that the returning staff are, should be at a higher level, that's really important. If we want to keep people here and show them we value their experience, that's an important factor. That's, those are just my thoughts. Any other question or comments?
When, when you hire somebody, though, do you, do you look at their experience to determine and, and look at your. and, and look at your other employees so that you don't leapfrog anybody, or do they just start at step one? I'm just trying.
We, we work to not leapfrog anyone, which in this case, if we were to talk about hourly staff because of our increase, really meant that all of our new hires this year started at step one, uh, because otherwise, they would be leapfrogging. Um, and, and same thing, we're talking about hard to recruit, uh, teaching positions, and, um, knowing what we've offered some hard to recruit people, it, it feels uncomfortable to offer somebody with less or the same amount of experience more, um, and the feedback that I've gotten from the certified staff, um, when I bring that topic up is right, it, they appreciate not leapfrogging, but right, there's still that challenge of trying to recruit and get people because they can pay them more in another district for those hard to, to get positions, but we want to be respectful of the people who have committed to us as well, um, so it's a, a balance that we're working through.
It probably has as much to do with starting wage too, you know, when that bottom keeps coming up and creeps up on employees with some experience and sometimes they get too close together.
Questions or comments?
Okay, well, thank you. Moving on to twelve point oh three, uh, Elementary Boundary Review Committee, I think that's you, Mr. Trowbridge.
It is, thank you. Uh, the Elementary Boundary Review Committee, or EBRC, has made significant progress in working and establishing a framework, uh, for evaluating potential elementary school boundary adjustments. Uh, the first public session on January fifteenth, uh, the committee co-facilitators shared key developments and gathered some community feedback. There was good attendance at that event, um, always could use more, but overall, I think it was pretty decent. EBRC has identified five guiding themes, student-centered decision-making, facility and resource optimization, special programs and services access, community impact management, and implementation metrics. They've established some non-negotiable parameters, including class size targets of eighteen to twenty-two students in grades K through three, and twenty-two to twenty-five students for grades four through five, in alignment with the Wisconsin Act twenty early literacy emphasis. Current enrollment data shows significant disparities across our elementary schools, uh, ranging from the lowest at one seventeen, the highest to three seventy-eight. The Applied Population Lab Study projects continued enrollment decline district-wide, with most schools expecting a, a range of decreases by the year two thousand twenty-nine thirty. The committee co-facilitators developed a draft weighted scoring system for evaluating boundary scenarios, with primary career criteria being sixty percent focusing on student impact, at thirty percent, facility utilization at twenty percent, demographic balance at ten percent, and then some secondary cr- criteria making up forty percent, addressing operational efficiency and community impact, each at twenty percent. The committee will review and make a determination, uh, whether the weighted scoring system is appropriate to meet their needs. If not, they will adjust that accordingly. Uh, the third, EBRC meeting is scheduled for tomorrow night, January twenty-ninth. Uh, the focus will be on interactive mapping training, some area development. That will be the first opportunity for this group to see the ATS in our study. Provide some feedback on the scoring review system, or system review, and also the timeline. Four ru- four working groups will analyze current boundaries and develop some initial proposals, considering community feedback and documenting the rationale for their changes. The committee remains on track to present final recommendations to the board in March of twenty twenty-five for implementation for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. For more information or to provide feedback, uh, please visit the district website, the EBRC webpage, which has been active since December twentieth. Respectfully submitted by Jeff and myself.
Does anyone have any questions regarding this update?
The only question I have is, you know, I see in here that over the next five years or so, they're expecting between a three and eighteen percent decrease, so in population between the schools, but, kind of as we move forward, when we look at the facility plan then, how will that look as far as however this is altered, you know? The way I see it, not a lot of the options that were laid out in here really reflect what's probably coming with the redistricting, so how does that kind of play in, I guess?
Yeah, I think that's the perspective of the architects and what we ask them to do. So I think, I think the group can sort through the data of what does it mean from a facilities perspective? What does the population study show us or at least predict, and how does that factor into kind of formulating a recommendation for how to.
So it's pretty likely then that this recommendation will be drastically altered.
Probably. The recommendation from the committee, this is just a piece of data for it.
I'm talking how this, how this.
You're pointing to your master.
Facility plan, yeah, sorry. So, I mean, this is kind of gonna, you know, I mean, I've gotten also calls from parents concerned about school closures and things of that nature, and so I just, you know, I realize it's just their recommendation, but I can see more calls coming in about that particular thing, and so I'm thinking it's just a thought that it's likely, the facility plan will likely change drastically based on the outcome of the redistricting.
It certainly could, yes.
Thanks.
Any other questions? I just want to thank everybody who serves on that committee because it's a lot, from what I understand.
Any, for committee members in the room, anything that we missed?
No, no, um, like you said, it's been going good. We've developed the framework, um, you know, waiting on the, um, studies, the population study, and tomorrow they'll dive in.
Mr. Olson, where is he? Go pick up his slack.
Clean call, clean the dark with the minor Santa. All right, well, thank you very much for that update. And then next up, twelve point oh four is Discussion of Board Activities, Southview Learning Walk. Who went on that?
I did.
Who wants to give that update?
It was, I mean, it was wonderful. It, we, we, um, Janet spent some time with us just sharing the building, and then, um, we had an opportunity to be in almost every grade role, and also in either music or PE, and again, just, you know, what we learn here and then being able to see it in action and be able to interact with kids, you know, really says, we're doing a lot of really good stuff.
It's wonderful.
Yeah, yep, it, it's, um, nice to go, go in and see what they're working on, um, you know, in the classroom, you know, from that, the economic portion with, with the fifth graders. I know one of the classes I was in, they were, um, creating businesses or whatever, so, you know, they had to like think through. So yeah, it was really, really good, or, um, some of the, the younger grades and, and things that they're learning or know is, is amazing.
Yeah, I, to be honest, that, uh, example where they were supposed to decide if they could buy a PS five, was that the number?
Yeah.
Or not, and I expected all of them to say, oh yeah, absolutely, yes, and they're like, well, no, we have to buy, and I thought, I know I wouldn't have thought like that when I was in fifth grade. I'm, can guarantee you, just ask, if my parents were still around, you could ask. Uh, all right, Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting, did anybody in here go?
I can read that.
I sense a theme here, I don't know.
Yeah, there was, there was a lot of, a lot of people there, um, I just remember it was really cold.
Oh, just during that?
Yeah, yep, and, uh, Kathy and, and Sarah joined us as well, so it's great to be able to talk to other people and whatnot, so. Yeah, it was very good.
Okay, again, WASB State Convention, were the you two and Steve?
I can, Steve, but I can read Steve's report.
He's gonna read the report?
He submitted a report.
Wow.
Here it is. This is my report on the WASB meeting. Um, the convention provided many opportunities to learn about what is happening in the many districts throughout Wisconsin. All but a few are struggling with enrollment issues, and around eighty percent have gone to an operational referendum in the past years. The sessions I attended ranged from information on school funding, communicating with the public, better board communication, and how to market your school district. I also attended a session presented by WIAA to better understand the challenges they are facing. The general session was interesting, and I estimate the exposition hall had more than two hundred and fifty vendors. Anyone needs an ink pen, I may have a few extra from the vendor tables. Altogether.
Didn't spend a wheel to get those. I wouldn't.
Well, he's, he collects well, and, you know. Uh, I feel that we as a district are ahead of the curve in the discussions of funding, declining enrollment, and mental health. I am also thankful for our healthcare initiatives for our district employees, as rising healthcare insurance is also a topic discussion. Thank you all district employees for your efforts to make a good school district.
Wow, that's a great report.
That's why I decided I'd read it.
Wow. Impressive. We'll have to give him kudos next time we see him.
Not too many.
It's not, no. Let him go to, let him go to attend. Uh, okay, thirteen, does anybody who else who attended the, the convention have anything to add?
It was one of the better, I mean, I've been several years, it was one of the better ones, I thought, just a lot of variety, a lot of, um, opportunities. And again, as always, I just feel like, you know, we're, we're doing great things here. When you listen to where other folks are, I don't feel like, oh my gosh, how come we're not, what should we be? Doesn't come off.
I just would like to thank everybody who had the opportunity to attend, and I appreciate you going, and, uh, I think everybody found the experience to be valuable.
It, it never worked with my schedule.
Right, right, that's so hard.
Maybe if I retired and then appoint in the future, I can go. Cause I sense a theme with the, I'm three, just saying.
Three amigos.
Yes. All right, uh, thirteen oh one, Discussion of Meeting, does anybody have anything or input regarding the Discussion of the Meeting? Okay, moving right along, thirteen one oh two, uh, Thursday, right, January thirtieth, month be Thursday, is the District Holiday and Years of Service Recognition Gathering at The View. I'm presuming people head to RSVP.
Yep.
They wanted to go, so. Uh, February twentieth is the Board Learning, Learning Walk at one P M at Jim Falls Elementary. February twenty-fourth is Business Staffer After Hours at the Chippewa Youth Hockey Association. And February twenty-fifth is our next board meeting at this location. Anything else that anybody knows of? All right, well then I would look for a motion to adjourn, and I want to note that I'm early compared to what the agenda is gonna be, and when we started, I thought we were gonna get out of here late, so.
Well done, thank you ma'am, for a very well-run meeting.
Um, motion to adjourn, no, I did forget that. Anybody?
Go move.
Motion by McKillop, is there a second?
Second, cause that's the theme with me.
Second by Mar, no, all those in favor sticking up my way saying aye.
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 Those opposed, meeting is adjourned at nine oh four.